Welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this May 6, 2019. I'll now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dera?
Here.
Wieland?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item one, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting of April 15?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item two is a motion to approve a special meeting of April 25.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. That carries as well. I do have this evening the privilege of reading a few proclamations on behalf of the city. The first is for the Cedar Falls Historic Preservation Month. It reads in part, "Whereas established in 1973 by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, Preservation Month is celebrated each May. During Preservation Month, many events are planned throughout the country to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas Cedar Falls has long recognized the importance of historic preservation through the Historic Society, Community Main Street, Central Business District Planning, and more recently with the Historic Preservation Commission. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and appreciate the heritage that has shaped our community and us as a people, and therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Cedar Falls Historic Preservation Month and encourage all citizens to take advantage of the many historic attractions and features in our community. Signed this 6th day of May 2019." I know one of our Historic Preservation Commission members is here, Meredith Main. Thank you for coming. The next proclamation is for National Economic Development Week. It reads in part, "Whereas Grow Cedar Valley is the economic development organization that provides the regional economic and community vision for the Cedar Valley, and whereas Grow Cedar Valley and the economic partners in Cedar Falls, including the City of Cedar Falls and public and private sector partners, are promoting and securing a vision of growth and economic development for Cedar Falls, its community members and businesses through programs explicitly directed at improving the business climate. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is essential to a thriving Cedar Falls economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings that include rural, urban, local, state, federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. Now therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby recognize May 6 through the 11th as National Economic Development Week in the City of Cedar Falls and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebrating, which supports expanding career opportunities and improving quality of life. Signed 6th day of May 2019." I believe we have our award-winning economic developer, Lisa Skobel, here to just receive it. That's fine. Yep, thanks Lisa, appreciate you being here along with Keri at Grow Cedar Valley. The final proclamation is Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and it reads in part, "Whereas every year on the 2nd Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, over 1.5 billion pounds of food had been collected. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities. All of the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in need in our community. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 27 years that the National Letter Carrier Drive celebrates in 2019." Now therefore I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim this Saturday, May 11, be designated as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day and encourage the citizens in our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together we can all help to feed our hungry. Signed again this 6th day of May 2019." Olivia Balak? Sure, come on up. Just right to the microphone, please, you bet.
Okay, and I have a question for you guys. We could use volunteers and we never see any of you guys, so we were wondering, at like 10 o'clock, because the other mayor and other people used to do it, so we were wondering if you guys... I know it's prom weekend, I know it's other stuff going on Mother's Day weekend, but even volunteering for like a half an hour to an hour would make a difference for us. And you just come to the post office about 10, 10:30, and we give you a route to go pick up food just for a little bit, and then you can be off. And then local businesses this year, about 20 of them are providing food from their local businesses to feed us and give us drinks this year, so you will be fed well as well. So that'd be awesome if you could help out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item in our agenda, are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next order is Special Order of Business. Item three is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the city's FY19 budget. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move to oral comments, I'll have Lisa Roding, our Controller and City Treasurer, come up for, or at least speak on... Sorry Lisa, you were right here just about 10 minutes ago, so I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff, and the audience. Tonight's public hearing is for the fiscal year 2019 budget amendments, and it is required by Iowa code. If you remember back, the time has lapsed between the actual budget preparation, when it was approved, and then our fiscal year end, which is coming up here at June 30th. That time has been about 18 to 20 months. So we have budget amendments tonight. These... The budget consists of the city appropriations for each program and the purpose specified until these items are amended. Budget amendments may be amended and increased as they arise with permitted appropriations and expenditures of these unanticipated revenues, unexpendited cash balances that are on hand, and transfers of underspent line items. Each of these amendments may be considered and adopted at any time during the fiscal budget year, but the budget would need to be amended by May 30th, or May 31st, excuse me. Our process does include the filing of the amendments, publishing of the amendments, and giving a notice of this public hearing. This is all done in the same manner as the original budget was done. This is per Iowa code. Cities account for expenditures in the following nine program areas of public service: the public safety, public works, health and social services, cultural and recreation, community and economic development, general government, debt service, capital improvement projects, and business-type activities. The fiscal year 2019 budget amendments for the City of Cedar Falls are necessary due to timing of capital projects and participation in grant programs. These budget amendments also include the annual department division, normal budget amendments. These increase in expenditures are covered by underspent line items, as well as grant reimbursements, additional revenues, and cash reserves. Again, this budget amendment process is required and must be completed with the county auditor by May 31st.
Thank you, Lisa. Now open it up for public comment on this public hearing. Anyone? Give your name and address, please.
Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road. Wasn't stated in the flyer here, but we're talking about an amendment equal to $840,000 to its safety and public works department, and 8.8 million towards capital projects. How did we miss $9 million in these projects? Or how did we miss 840,000 alone? It seems like with all the Excel programs and everything that I use at work, that we should be able to have a top-notch accounting of these kind of expenses. And I don't understand how $840,000 got missed. So would just like to make that known, and I'm against approving it.
Thank you. Anyone further? Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item four is a resolution approving and adopting amendments of the city's FY19 budget. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, open it up for council, discussion or questions. Mr. Blanford.
Mr. Ryan, can you just clarify, this is not items that were missed? This is timing of how we pay for the capital projects that were conducted through the CIP process, which has gone on for a year. This is not that your department miscalculated on anything?
No, it is not. It would be the larger item, the capital projects item, would be some timing of some grant revenues that came in from Black Hawk County Gaming. The University Avenue received a traffic safety improvement grant funding, which helped offset the expenditures there. The flood buyout program and the downtown levy was another larger project, which we actually used cash reserves for that project, which we will see future sales tax increment grant funding.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Director Olson, this is your area, public safety. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, you've mentioned, I believe in your presentation, that this budget was approved or certified a year ago? A year ago?
Yes, we started the process November, December timeframe, and then it was actually approved at the November, or the February 19, 2018 council meeting.
So the actual process of the budget we're speaking of, process being goal-setting, actually was done in the fall of 2017, before the council decided then how the budget's going to be affected, at least now towards the amendment.
Correct.
So I will go to you, Director Olson, is there high-level information there in terms of the dollar amounts? We're talking here for the public safety division?
Yes, there is. So we had three different categories that consumed considerably more dollars than we anticipated, to the tune of a little over 600,000. $300,000 of that was overtime to the fire budget. We had about 20 firefighters use over 4,700 hours of sick leave in the last nine months, which constituted a significant amount of overtime costs. We also had several people exit, resign or retire, much higher than we normally have. We normally have an attrition rate of four to five people a year, but we had significantly more this year. And so that... We try to reuse gear, you know, if it's new enough or it'll fit other individuals, but we weren't able to do that for all these individuals, and that was about $105,000 worth of additional gear we had to buy for the new hires. And then as we're going through this transitional period, we've decided to do some hiring ahead. What I mean by that is we're anticipating individuals retiring or leaving, we're hiring ahead to get them... The hiring process takes several months, and then the training process takes several months. So we did some hiring ahead, and that cost us another $140,000. So that's where a majority of that 600,000 came from.
Very good, thank you. Anything further, Mr. DeBoer?
Yearly, we've always had these budget amendments done shortly before the end of the year. Is there anything different or unusual this one than what we've had every other year, other than what was explained already?
I don't recall anything different. We've always had these, especially the large capital projects, where it is just timing of whether it's weather-related or that sort of thing, that some of the projects do get delayed, or they carry over from one fiscal year to another because of the construction season overlapping those two fiscal years.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Director Olson, this is your area, public safety. And correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, you've mentioned, I believe in your presentation, that this budget was approved or certified a year ago? A year ago?
Yes, we started the process November, December timeframe, and then it was actually approved at the November, or the February 19, 2018 council meeting.
So the actual process of the budget we're speaking of, process being goal-setting, actually was done in the fall of 2017, before the council decided then how the budget's going to be affected, at least now towards the amendment.
Correct.
So I will go to you, Director Olson, is there high-level information there in terms of the dollar amounts? We're talking here for the public safety division?
Yes, there is. So we had three different categories that consumed considerably more dollars than we anticipated, to the tune of a little over 600,000. $300,000 of that was overtime to the fire budget. We had about 20 firefighters use over 4,700 hours of sick leave in the last nine months, which constituted a significant amount of overtime costs. We also had several people exit, resign or retire, much higher than we normally have. We normally have an attrition rate of four to five people a year, but we had significantly more this year. And so that... We try to reuse gear, you know, if it's new enough or it'll fit other individuals, but we weren't able to do that for all these individuals, and that was about $105,000 worth of additional gear we had to buy for the new hires. And then as we're going through this transitional period, we've decided to do some hiring ahead. What I mean by that is we're anticipating individuals retiring or leaving, we're hiring ahead to get them... The hiring process takes several months, and then the training process takes several months. So we did some hiring ahead, and that cost us another $140,000. So that's where a majority of that 600,000 came from.
Very good, thank you. Anything further, Mr. DeBoer?
Yearly, we've always had these budget amendments done shortly before the end of the year. Is there anything different or unusual this one than what we've had every other year, other than what was explained already?
I don't recall anything different. We've always had these, especially the large capital projects, where it is just timing of whether it's weather-related or that sort of thing, that some of the projects do get delayed, or they carry over from one fiscal year to another because of the construction season overlapping those two fiscal years.
Thank you.
Anything further from council? Been motion second, this requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item five is a public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement, University Branch of Dry Run Creek project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, before all comments, Chase or Matt, who's got this one? Matt, go ahead, sir, on this public hearing.
Mayor, council, thank you. So this is the Walnut Street Box Culvert. This is located on the University Branch of Dry Run Creek, between 20th Street and 21st Street. Just to give you some background on this existing structure, there is a bridge that was built in 1955. We're starting to see some deck deterioration and structural deficiencies on that bridge right now. This new structure will be a twin-barrel or twin-cell box culvert. They'll be 14 by 6 in size for each channel. Along with that will be channel improvements, channel excavation, and then restabilization of that area. Along with this project, we will be reconstructing Walnut. Along that section, they'll include new water, sanitary, and storm sewer systems along that area, as well as the rework of the intersections at 20th and 21st. Along with this project, right now we're looking at including sidewalks with a CDPG grant funding, and trying to incorporate sidewalks in that area where there currently aren't any.
Now I'll open it up for public comment on this public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item six is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the Walnut Street Box Culvert Replacement. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion or questions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing on the proposed plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Ridgeway Avenue Reconstruction Project, Chancellor Drive to Nordic Drive. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, before all comments, I think Chase has this one for this public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. This project involves the reconstruction of Ridgway Avenue from Nordic Drive West, approximately 750 feet. It will include the removal and replacement of the existing pavement, the installation of a roundabout, and also a right-hand eastbound turn lane. This is in conjunction with the development to the south of there. It will be a Mills Fleet Farm, as you know. At the end of last year, we went through a developmental agreement with that developer and secured some private funds for this project. This project is anticipated to cost approximately $1.9 million, and it will be paid for from the South Cedar Falls TIF, as well as the private funds. I would anticipate construction getting started here in the next four weeks, and then it has a completion date of the end of September this year.
Thank you. Now open it up for public comment on this public hearing.
Okay, Larry Wykoff again, 4241 East Park Road. I guess seeing this now from the big picture, Nordic Drive and the roundabout that's already up there, I'm wondering why measures couldn't be taken to direct traffic to the roundabout that's already up there? Instead of building, taking out $1.9 million worth of pristine cement? My first thought when I saw this was a dart used to find one specific little area that was needed? I'm just very perplexed as to why this area, this street with... I drove on this street just before I came here, and there's no potholes, there's no impro... properties. It's just, it's pristine. And I'm just completely confused as to why this little section was picked to be used as a roundabout. I don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff.
Thank you.
Jim Skane, 2215 Clay Street, advocates for the people of Cedar Falls. I have been looking at the packets that accompany these agenda, and this time the agenda is five pages long. I've never seen one that long. Secondly, the packet, and I'm sure all of you have read every page of it, it was 808 pages long. Now, I happen to be interested in this number seven, and so I tried to figure out how to get to the packet page, and it takes a bit of knowledge. I mean, it's taken me two or three weeks to really figure out, but I found page 26. And on page 26, and this is a reproduction of page 26, it's not easy to print from that either, because if you put the print thing, you're going to get 808 pages. That's it, you know? So the important thing is that in this particular process, we have one page that was sent to the mayor, I believe it is addressed... Yeah, it's from Stephanie Sheets, right? Okay, somebody, Department of Community Development? Okay, City of Cedar Falls. And it says to Honorable Mayor JP Brown and City Council, oh, I guess from Chase Draghi, whoever he is, principal engineer. And then it says about this particular project, it's interesting. It says that I would also request that the notice to bidders be published by April 19, 2019. Now, that's just a couple weeks back. So the bidders have to get all that information, and they have to put all together to submit a bid? Or was the bid already known? And it says also, it says it would allow more than three weeks of review before contract letting. This project involves the reconstruction of Ridgway Avenue from Nordic Drive West, 750 feet. Almost 750 feet, okay? And then it indicates, and then it has that word, installation of a roundabout. And that's interesting, because I have seen a lot of roads redone in Waterloo. In fact, they have a major problem with Greyhound Park and Ridgway, and they have a grant from the state for $350,000, and they're going to do a heck of a lot more than 750 feet for $350,000. But since a roundabout generally costs $1.75 million each, unless it's a multiple one, then it's more expensive, they estimate the cost at 1,000, excuse me, $1,942,700. And then the key thing is, it's funded by the South Cedar Falls TIF and private funds. Now we know...
One minute, Mr. Skane.
Oh, I'm being timed, I guess, okay. And he's going to shut me off, even though I have something important to say. I know about debate too, Mr. Mayor. And in that particular process, there is the statement that it's funded by the South Cedar Falls TIF. I happen to know that any money that goes into the south side urban renewal stays there. All money stays there. So none of the money that goes there goes for anything other than those projects. And yet they feel that they have enough money to waste $1,900,000.
Time's up, Mr. Skane, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Anyone further for public comment this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Hearing and seeing none.
I believe, I believe...
No, sir, you need to take a seat.
I believe you continue to infringe on my right.
That can be a whole other topic of the public comment portion of the variant, but not here. So thank you very much. Anyone further? Hearing and seeing none.
Another mistake, another mistake.
Item made as resolution approving and adopting the plans for the Ridgway Avenue Reconstruction Project, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussions, questions or comments from council? Mr. DeBoer?
Could, we have staff just explain why this is being done?
So, you want me to jump in? So anyway, Mayor, council, if you recall, this is kind of an ongoing project. We had the traffic study was completed when the Farman Fleet... I'm sorry. We had the traffic study completed as the Farman Fleet, and then we had a development agreement with that private developer as we moved forward. And this is just getting to the final stage here of construction. And the developer has deposited 1.7 million of this particular project into an account for the city as we move forward with construction.
Thank you very much. Anything else from council? Been motion, motion in a second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Item nine is a public hearing on the proposed plan specification form of contract and estimate of cost for the 100-block alley reconstruction project. Is there a motion receiving file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before all comments, I think, Chase, you have this one, too?
I will go over this project. Thank you. We're just going to keep you guessing. So, this project is in the 100 block of Main Street. It's the alley on the east side, near where the new parking lot is, has been constructed. The alley was originally proposed to be part of that project, and we had been working on that, but ran into some design difficulties and project timelines that we ultimately needed to have the developer complete his part, and we just were coming back to the alley part of it. So, we worked with AECom to get the design ready to go. The work includes the removal and replacement of the entire alley. There's significant underground utility work that is occurring. There's going to be some significant improvements in drainage that will happen. We're adding subdrain, adding connections for each of the properties so that they can connect in with their some pumps and with their downspouts. We're providing that connection, then they will have to actually make that connection. And also, another component, one thing that held us up in design a little bit was discussion about some of the rear entrances of the buildings, and they currently encroach into the alley area. And there was a question about what would have to be replaced, and how, and building code issues that we've worked through. And later in the agenda, you'll have agreements where the property owners are paying for the replacement of the stairs above grade, where the city is putting in the foundation for those. We've also incorporated some decorative elements to this, some bollards for lighting that will kind of replicate what we've got in Gateway Park is our goal there. And then removable bollards, which was a recommendation out of the parking study, is whether this be something that could be shut off from time to time if there were events, and that if there were interest to do so. So, we're including that component, as well as an alternate in the bid for colored concrete that if we move forward with the parcade design, as that's going to be coming forward to council soon, we'll talk about how we can integrate those elements, and that's why we have that alternate in there. So, with all that, again, I should also state that there's quite a bit of an elevation change between the alley and the parking lot. So, there will be three different spots where we have stairs to help facilitate the movement back and forth between, so that people can park in that parking lot and get into the rear entrances of the buildings. So, with that, that's the project that's in front of you tonight.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll open up for public comment on this public hearing.
Sorry, but I was talking to some community people this weekend, and they said, "Why are we spending money on all these alleys when we don't plow them in the wintertime?" Silence. I don't understand why, why we spend all this money. And the poor people that have alleys, I think there's one guy back here that has an alley, and he can attest there's no plowing in the wintertime. I've got a good friend, she's, she asked me every winter, "Do you know anybody that could come over and plow out my alley? Why aren't we doing that?"
Thank you. Anyone further in public comment? Hearing and seeing none. I'll declare the hearing closed. Item ten is a resolution approving adopting the plans for the 100-block alley reconstruction project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion or comments from council?
I just have a question for staff about the, with the colored concrete and sort of the design features for that, is it expected just to be a transit point, or are we envisioning something kind of like we saw in the parking study of expanding out? It's like, is that the goal of what we're doing?
Right now, what we've got in, as an alternate in the bid, and Larry can correct me if I'm wrong, he's here tonight as well, but we've planned in conjunction with the stair locations, that that's where we would have a band of colored concrete with the color to match whatever the brick design is that we do along the parcade and side streets. So, that was our thought there, was highlighting those versus the entire alley.
Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item eleven is a public hearing on the FY nineteen through twenty-three consolidated plan and FY nineteen annual action plan for CDBG and home program funding. Is there a motion receiving file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item B, is there any written communications filed with the city clerk?
I have no written communications on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Again, before all comments, Stephanie, are you going to speak or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so this is the public hearing for the five-year consolidated annual action plan. Every five years, we have to go through a process of identifying what we would potentially be looking to target our use of our CDBG entitlement funds. And so, we put together a five-year program with some general allocations of funding for each of the years for various programs. The programs are identified, actually, we did a fair amount of public input in terms of asking, having some of our service organizations that work in kind of a low and moderate income arena. We had several focus group discussions with them. We had a survey available. We handed out that information about the survey to our folks in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, all of that, in order to come up with the list of potential programs that might be something we should recommend as part of our plan. And then each year, we have to do what's called an annual action plan. This is all governed by HUD and their requirements for the program. Each year, then, we have to say specifically what we're, the activities we're going to do that year, and the amount that we're going to spend that year. So, these are the two items tonight in front of you that we're at the end of that process. We've had two meetings with the Housing Commission. We've had no public comment on the, on the draft plan at this point.
Thank you, Stephanie. Open it up for public comment this evening in the public hearing. Hearing and seeing none. I'll declare the hearing closed. Item twelve is resolution approving and authorizing submission of the consolidated plan and action plan for CDBG and home program funding. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussions or questions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. On to old business. Item thirteen is pass ordinance two-nine-three-nine amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to the College Hill neighborhood district upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Green. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Cruz.
I was looking at the ordinance introduction, February thirteenth, and there's a comment here that staff notes, I'm reading this now, the staff notes, that the proposed change may need to be revisited after a parking study is completed for the area. And I understand that the preliminary results will be brought forward one week from today. And I think it would be prudent if we would wait to see the results of the preliminary. There's a lot of details in the parking study scope that talks about an analysis of projected land uses and parking demand ratios and all sorts of things like that. The draft report will include a set of management, organizational, and financial options, as well as possible planning and code modifications for the city to consider in redefining the Hill Parking and Mobility Program for future development activity. So, the parking study is speaking directly to development, and the staff is noting that the parking study is a component that may change the zoning that we're proposing here. So, I would ask that we consider postponing the vote on this until at least the preliminary results of the study are known. Because we're paying $44,000 for this parking study.
Your amendment is to postpone-
Let's see, just table it.
Or is your, is your, is your motion, or your amendment, motion to amend is to table before such time as that study comes back? I'm asking you, Mr. Cruz. I don't know what your-
I guess tabling would be appropriate action here, to wait for the results.
It's been motioned to amend this ordinance to postpone until, excuse me, to table until the parking study is complete.
At least the preliminary results and the follow-up full report, which is due in roughly six weeks after that.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I think Attorney Rogers is-
No, it got corrected to a motion to table. So, that's, but it was with condition, so it's debatable. If there's a second.
Yeah. I have not heard a second. Further not hearing a second, that amendment fails. It goes back to the original ordinance, two-nine-three-nine. Been motioned second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to table this ordinance until May twentieth, just for the preliminary results of the parking study.
There's been a motion to amend this ordinance to May twentieth. Is that with the date?
I'll second that.
There's been motion second. Any further discussion on that motion?
Can that one be debated, Kevin?
Yes.
Yes, there's a condition.
Condition, the twentieth. Anyone further? I'm going back and forth here. Go ahead, Mr. Blanchard.
Just Administrator Gaines, can you just clarify the distinction between the public meeting we're having Monday night and any final results or implementation from the parking study for College Hill?
Well, I think what, what they'll talk about Monday night is the first public meeting on the College Hill overlay parking study to actually go over what they're doing, what the results are. Very similar to the process that they had downtown, where you have the first public hearing, they'll come back with another public hearing with their recommendations, bring that to the city council, and then start to implement some of those changes. Now, if you recall, one of the things that they didn't get into in the downtown ordinance is they actually didn't get into what those parking ratios would be. That's something that we anticipate would be probably taken up in the visioning portion of, as we move forward with that process. Really, their recommendations centered around public parking.
Mr. Burr?
Well, it was somewhat the same question, was this, this parking meeting that they're having on Monday, was that basically for public input, not their final recommendations?
Absolutely. That's, that's what it's for. It's really informational about how the process is going to work, and then also to get some of that public input.
So, what's the timeframe on, on when we actually expect the final report?
I think Mr. Cruz was pretty accurate, six to eight weeks that we would expect the final report to come in.
Anyone further, Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll read the flyer that we received today in our council packet. It says, "Save the date, College Hill Parking Study Public Presentation and Workshop. The public's invited to participate in a workshop that will present initial findings and observations regarding the College Hill Parking Study that's currently underway. The presentation will take approximately 45 minutes, followed by an informal open discussion Q and A session." To tie on with what Counselor Cruz had said, he mentioned the general findings or what was going to be covered in the parking study. I've read this before. I'll read it again. From the provisions of what the, the contract said for this, this project, it says, "We will perform a parking impact analysis for the proposed five-story building mixed-use project that's been proposed in the College Hill District. This parking impact analysis will attempt to determine the anticipated parking demand generated by the proposed project, and to compare the anticipated demand against observed parking occupancies in the project impact area." So, it's not just a general study. That's what they're looking at. And I just think it's laughable that we would wait, or we wouldn't wait, two weeks to just hear what that has to say. I would love if there's, there's nothing that comes out of it, and we can move forward. But why are we putting the cart before the horse on this by voting on this as approval tonight? Why can't we just table it for the next session and then move on? I would love to vote for it in that case.
Mr. Blanchard.
But I guess, Councilman Green, my concern is what we're not saying is two weeks, because well, all we're going to get is initial findings from that. That's not talking about policy implementation, or, you know, whether it's, it's new public parking accommodations, or new meters, or anything of that nature. We won't have any of that in two weeks. That, that could be months out. So, when we're saying results of the parking study, while we may have initial findings, there will be no time to implement anything. So, the conditions will remain the same.
But we will know that there's an issue in that case. I'm just looking to see if there's something that pops up on our radar that we need to be concerned about. And if not, great, then on the twentieth, we move forward and vote for it.
So, I do have a quick question for you, Kevin, I think most likely, that if something came back after that preliminary meeting, nothing obviously is done to be formalizing that. But if we were, if, if council was to change and say, "The study is saying this. We would like to amend this ordinance," the question then becomes, is it substantive enough to start over with the ordinance in three readings? In other words, are we, are we just delaying this third and final of the original, of original ordinance? Or is that determined future, in the, in the future based on this amendment?
Your summary was exactly correct. So, we would, if this is tabled tonight, what's being tabled is the current ordinance that's been passed on two considerations now. If there were changes that were made when it comes off the table and is amended, if they're substantive, it would start over at P and Z.
Okay. Just clarifying. Mr. Miller?
Can Director Rodenbeck give some background here? There were a couple of things mentioned, and I think maybe the verbiage wasn't right, and how that, or how it's coming across, at least. The way I've interpreted this, similar to downtown, the parking consultant's going to look at the five-story building, similar to the Washington project downtown, to River Place projects, and put those buildings in his modeling, and say, "There's either enough parking, or there's not." I don't, didn't feel like it was much more than that. But then, as well, in regards to the code changes and whatnot, those are in regards to change in parking on Twenty-Second Street, because that has to come before the council by ordinance, correct? The intent wasn't to modify zoning as part of the parking consultant's work, correct?
Correct. Maybe just a couple of clarifications on a lot of things.
There's a lot there.
One, I just, no, that's okay. Even stepping back is, I just wanted to verify, upcoming this Monday is a presentation. And remembering back to downtown, what originally we did at the first meeting was, what was presented was findings in terms of, what did the surveys produce? What have they seen? You know, just preliminary count, observations. It was no recommendations at that point. Again, that will be the thing that will be coming six weeks from now, or whatever, in a final report. So, I just want to remind people, and when there was mention, there was a presentation Monday night. It's a presentation, but it's what were the survey results, you know, what are just some initial observations on counts. So then, moving on to your question, Mr. Miller, is, yes, in the downtown, you're exactly right. There's code changes, but the codes relate to two-hour parking, 24-hour parking. And as you recall, when we had that presentation, those recommendations were in there. And then what will happen next is an ordinance, first reading of an ordinance will be coming on the downtown, illustrating those recommendations and how we're implementing that. So, you're absolutely right. I think for us, we, we're not hiring a parking consultant to do our zoning. Those are things that could happen as we get into the next step of doing the visioning committee that planning's already working on with downtown, that, you know, we would look at in College Hill. So, I think when you use the word "code," it could mean any of those things in terms of time limits, fees, you know, any of those things that would require change our code of ordinances.
Mayor, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a time, there's a timing variable to this, too, as far as, we went right from downtown into College Hill intentionally to get all that data on the parking side of it. I don't want to say, you know, it's been said, "The cart before the horse," or whatnot, but there's a timing side of this that kind of pushed the parking study on the hill along. Is that accurate? To happen before the visioning, per se?
Sure. Well, I think a couple of things. We knew in the visioning that parking is still going to be a big issue and part of that. So, we thought there was a benefit to do a parking study first before we move on to visioning. I think the other thing with the College Hill, why we wanted to get it moving, was also we wanted to get counts in that when students are here. You know, trying to do a study in the summer on College Hill is not very reflective, you know? So, for us, we knew we either had to do it in the spring, or we were going to have to wait to the fall to do it. So, there was a little timing from that standpoint, too. I also didn't want to forget, you mentioned about the impact studies. Mr. Miller, in terms of, you know, we had, through the downtown study, also asked our consultant to look at the impact. Look at a project, see what its impact is on parking. In other words, if it's going to be one story of commercial, two of residential, put it in their modeling, and how does that work? So, we'd be looking at the same thing at College Hill, in terms if we want to do an impact study on a development, we would do that and see what those impacts are. Now, that impacts is truly impacts. It's not, you know, a recommendation of change your zoning to account for this. It's, here's what the average daily use of that kind of development would use, and how that impacts.
Thank you. Anyone further on the amendment to motion, excuse me, the amendment to table till May twentieth? It is on the table, the motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
That motion does not carry. We are back to passing ordinance two-nine-three-nine as presented. It's third and final. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, can, can staff guarantee that there's not going to be anything related to the five-story building in the findings?
I'll leave it to staff. I'll leave it to staff. I'm assuming that-
Well, for the presentation this upcoming Monday night, there is nothing in there about the five-story building. I mean, now, in saying all that, I haven't seen the final presentation in terms of if there's just some observations about, you know, things we heard the consultant already say, is, you know, there's lots of parking on the street. You know, it's those kind of observations that we're going to see in May here on Monday night.
Anything further from council?
If I may, for clarity's sake, isn't there going to be an impact study? I mean, isn't that written right into that, that there's going to be an impact study on that building?
We are planning on doing an impact study. When we hired them, we planned on having them do that.
So there will be data regarding the five-story building.
Anything further from council?
So if, as the consultant brings forward this information on the five-story building, if it says that with the one parking spot for one-bedroom studios with no visitor spot will dramatically overcrowd the hill with the existing parking that's available, then that would instigate a parking code change, would it not?
It could potentially.
Well, I think that, yeah, I guess like Mr. Miller said, it would be potentially. That is something then staff would take and determine, okay, is there something more with public parking that we need to provide because of a development, you know, based on the district they're in? What are some options for that, and what will we do with that? So I think it's, without knowing the data and the impact first, it's hard for us to know what we would come back with to recommend.
So that goes back to what was written in the February 13th initial presentation of the ordinance. It said, "Staff notes that the proposed change may need to be revisited after a parking study is completed for the area." So we're changing code with this ordinance. If the parking consultant comes back and says that the code changes, whether we have now or we're proposing, will overcrowd the hill and have it underparked, it seems justifiable to me to postpone this whole process until we have a study that we're paying $44,000 of taxpayer money to do. That's how I see it. We want to have all the information in front of us to determine if this version of the proposal is what is really in the best interest of the city and the College Hill, the merchants, the developer, and the residents around the area. We haven't even talked about things such as having room for the delivery trucks to bring in merchandise, the Red Bull vehicle, the Budweiser truck. They park in the street. There's nothing there for the commercial businesses, the commercial delivery people to fund and keep the businesses going. Those are all elements that we have to look at and should look at, and that's why we pay a consultant $44,000 to do so.
Mr. Bor.
This ordinance defines a mixed-use building, which we currently don't define in our ordinance. It also provides for a parking requirement in the C-3, which currently our ordinance does not have. So if we fail to pass this ordinance, wouldn't they therefore be able to build with no parking in the C-3?
That's correct. We would go back to where we were with this proposal a year or two ago, where, with staff's recommendation that the ordinance does not require parking.
With this ordinance, if we pass it, it at least requires one spot per bedroom. And as far as delivery vehicles, those aren't addressed either way.
Correct.
Mr. Miller?
And to Councilman Cruz, that the other side of that is, all of that data, or at least some of that data, the consultant is going to make available to us, as to what these businesses need out there. The other side of Director Rodenbeck's comment is that the public parking realm could change. We, as a council, also have the opportunity to not approve that project if it doesn't meet the standards based on the parking consultant's information. So all still within our control throughout the process, if the focus is on the five-story building.
Mr. Cruz?
So then, if we approve this as it is, we eliminate the visitor parking requirement, there's nothing there for commercial, and we find that after the consultant goes through his process, and I believe I saw somewhere by the end of July was going to be the hard end of the program, that is there going to be a stomach for the staff to say, hey, we need to modify what we just put in place here? Is that, or is that up to us, then, as council to propose?
Oh, is it up to council to propose and decide?
Is it, it's our, we push them along, so if something needs to be changed, and you have a council majority, then-
I just look at this as a financial planner and think to myself, why would I spend $44,000 on a parking study that will look at the impact of the building, what's there, what can be changed, how it's going to influence and change things? And I would tell my client to wait until the study shows up and get the results.
That's not the scope of the study. That's one small portion of what we're trying to get at, which is, is there appropriate public infrastructure, both currently and for the future growth of the hill? It's a holistic look at it. It's not, is this one building-
It specifically says that it's going to look at-
It's a reference point for it, but that's not the scope of the study. They're looking at the entire College Hill overlay district.
Of course. And how the five-story fits in that.
It's looking at how growth fits in the hill, period. So it's not, we're not shaping it all based off that one development. That's not what we're shooting for.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying, we're looking at a study, it's one component to give us a better reference point going forward. And waiting six weeks, or whatever it takes to finish this, seems appropriate to me.
Very good. Motion and second. Any further discussion from council? Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, just, I want to add in from what we'd said the last meeting about this limited window of advantage. So Planning and Zoning has a meeting set for Wednesday night. This is on the agenda, it's listed as deferred. So if we approve this zoning tonight, it goes before, Planning and Zoning Wednesday night comes to us very soon. And then, we have this potential change later on, once the study comes out, and we change it back. So I hope we can at least agree that what we're doing is providing advantageous, limited window of opportunity for a single developer. Just realize we're doing that in the process.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Frank?
I haven't had a whole lot to say, partly because I feel like I've heard a lot of this before. I think maybe the mistake that the city made was not doing this visioning three years ago, when this developer first brought this project to us. We've turned it down multiple times. We've made, the city's made modifications to both accommodate the concerns of the developer and the concerns of the neighbor. And if we wait to finish every study, we're not going to get anything accomplished. I mean, it'd be great to have this vision done three years ago, but it wasn't, and it's being done now. But this developer has been, brought several projects to us, modified them, the city's accommodated that. I just think it's time to move on with it.
If I may, Mayor, I just should reiterate, Mr. Bur's point, this puts a more stringent parking requirement in place for said project if that is how the timing works out. So I can understand the concern, but to me, this is a good thing.
Anything further from council? There has been a great deal of discussion up to the day. Is there a will open up for anyone, public comment in this particular ordinance? Very good. Council, it's on motion second. It requires a roll call vote, please.
Which motion are we voting on now? Original motion.
Mr. Wieland? Mr. Wieland? Thank you.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, the consent calendar, the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled for such discussion. Any such items from the council?
Item 14, Mr. Mayor.
Item 14? Anyone further from the council? From the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll summarize the consent calendar minus item 14. 15 is approved, the recommendation of the mayor relative to the appointment of Paul Lee to the Civil Service Commission, term ending 4/6/2020. I want to thank Mr. Lee for his service to the city. Item 16 is receive and file the committee the whole minutes of April 15th. 17 is receive and file monthly reports of March 2019. 18 is receive and file communications from the Civil Service Commission. 19 is receive and file the 2018 annual reports of various commissions, boards, and committees. 20 is receive and file the biannual report of Community Main Street. 21 is receive and file the biannual report of College Hill Partnership. 22 is receive and file three reports in conjunction with the West First Street Reconstruction Project. 23 is approving applications and permits, and 24 is approving applications for permits and licenses. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor, say aye.
I'd like to thank Paul Lee for his service.
Yep, thank you, once again. Shout out to Paul. I'll go back to the, is there a motion, please?
So moved.
We already had it. All right, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Circling back to item 14, it reads, "Approve the recommendation of the mayor relative to the appointment of Rebecca Aberly as student liaison, term ending April 30, 2020. Is there a motion, please?"
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Blanchard, you polled it?
Please, our current student liaison would like to say a few words, and then welcome our new representative.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to take a brief moment to share my gratitude for the opportunity to be in this position during this last year. I know I've not had the opportunity to meet all of you, or all of you as well, and I have not had the time to get done some of the things that I had hoped. However, I hope to leave all of you with a sense of partnership between students and the community at large. My primary goal this year was to build bridges that have deteriorated over time, unfortunately, and I believe that we may, we have made excellent progress toward this goal. From here, I hope to see even more student engagement in the community and vice versa. You and I isn't an island. And because, that's because we are all responsible for the stewardship of our community, and our whole community, not just our own block or our own campus. I look forward to seeing these relationships grow over time, and it really has been a true privilege to be able to help foster that growth. As for my own plans, I'll be moving back to the Des Moines area to work as an executive assistant once the semester is over, but I look forward to coming back to Cedar Falls to enjoy the great place to live, work, and play that all of us have helped build as a community. I would like to, at this time, also give a brief introduction of Rebecca Aberly, who, if confirmed, will assume the role of city council liaison. Rebecca is a sophomore public administration major, originally from Walker, Iowa. She served as the secretary for Circle K, which is a volunteer organization on campus, and she looks forward to working with the mayor, council, city staff, and the community to help build a better Cedar Falls. If it would be in order, I would also request that Rebecca and myself exchange seats after the vote to signify her new position. Thank you all again for the opportunity to be with you this year. It has truly been a privilege, and I hope that everyone here and at home has a safe and fun summer as well.
Thank you, Jacob. Great job yourself, really. Anything further from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant Mr. Green's request.
Second.
Been motioned, second. Any further discussion from council?
I just want to, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank Mr. Madden for his professionalism in this role. I think he's brought a great deal to it, and I thank you. We're very appreciative to have you here, so thank you.
Been motioned, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we'll now let you folks exchange your seats there, if you don't mind, and welcome Rebecca. Moving on to the resolution calendar, the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled for such request. Any such requests from the council?
31, please.
I'm sorry.
31.
31.
Item 36, Mr. Mayor.
36. Anyone further from council? I am going to pull item 34. Anyone further from council? From the public? Hearing and seeing none, I'll summarize the resolution calendar minus items 31, 34, and 36. Item 25 is resolution approving and authorizing execution of a consulting agreement relative to employee benefits. Item 26 is approving and authorizing execution of an amendment to the employer participation agreement relative to auditing of pharmacy benefits. 27 is a resolution approving the expenditure of funds for the purchase of printers and copiers. 28 is approving and authorizing execution of an easement. 29 and 30 are resolutions approving and authorizing execution of agreements for record, towing, and storage services. Item 32 is resolution approving and authorizing the purchase of a grappler loader truck. Item 33 is approving and accepting the contract and bond for the Permanible Alley Project. 35 is approving and accepting a lien notice and special promissory note for the rental to single-family owner conversion program. Item 37 is approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement to the professional services agreement for survey services relative to the Cedar River recreational improvement project. Item 38 is approving and authorizing execution of a contract for appraisal services relative to 2019 Northern Cedar Falls flood buyout program. 39 is approving and authorizing execution of an encroachment agreement with the North Cedar Neighborhood Association relative to placement of a neighborhood sign within the public right-of-way. Item 40 is a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Fern subdivision. 41 is approving the final plat of Fern subdivision. 42 is approving an S1 shopping center district site plan for redevelopment of a building located on University Avenue. Item 43 is approving and authorizing execution of a developmental procedures agreement with Ashley Furniture relative to property located on University Avenue. 44 is approving the reassignment of a professional services agreement relative to the downtown visioning and zoning code update project. 45 is approving and adopting priorities for the downtown visioning and zoning code update. Item 46 is approving the proposal for Sturgis Falls Celebration to construct a permanent stage and waiving the variance application fee. 47 is approving and authorizing execution of five memorandums of agreement for stair reconstruction. And 48 is approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement for the 2019 engineering services. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendars minus those items polled?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Going back to item 31, it reads, "A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Black Hawk County Pheasants Forever and Quail Fever Forever Chapter relative to the youth pollinator habitat project." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Open up for discussion from council.
Mayor, if I can just get some clarification from Director Riplinger. It looked like on the map, there was a map provided of one pollinator area behind Policeman's Park or at the back of Policeman's Park, but I believe this is in reference to two different locations, and I was just hoping for clarification.
You bet. Mark?
Mr. Miller, you're actually, you're absolutely correct. When we started working with Josh Nunez on his project, he approached the city with two or three different locations. Some of them were flood by all properties, the other was the North Cedar Nature Preserve Project, and also some areas on Lincoln Street. So after all the discussions with Mr. Nunez, it was decided that the first time we would partner with them would be at Police Officer Memorial Park. So you're correct, probably a way to amend this would be to change North Cedar Prairie Planting to Police Officer Memorial Park.
It can include both locations. It looks like down in the project details that he's got an address of the NRP, but as well as Police Officers Park, or do we need to take a more formal route there?
At this time, he is only, they're only going to do one project this year, and that would be the Police Officer Memorial Park, and then we would enter into another memorandum of understanding for the next project.
Okay. Make a motion to amend, then.
Motion to amend.
To just be one, is that accurate?
Police Officer Memorial Park, correct.
Been motioned to amend by Councilman Miller.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Amendment carries. Would that also then wrap into the original, or is that changing the original?
Original is amended.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to vote on the original.
Thank you. Moving back to item 31, approving and authorizing the memorandum of understanding is now on the table as amended. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Excuse me, any further discussion? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item thirty-four reads, "A resolution approving and accepting two temporary construction easements, one warranted deed and one special warranty deed in conjunction with the Ridgeway Avenue Reconstruction Project." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded. I indeed polled this item because Attorney Rogers had some clarification on, I think, one of the specially warranty deed portion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council's aware, these conveyances shown in item thirty-four have to do with the Ridgeway Reconstruction Project. We have discovered that the track that's being conveyed to the city for the right-of-way is subject to a lease, and we've pointed this out to the entities, and council for the tenant has agreed to quit claiming the tenant's interest in that property so the city takes it free and clear. They've promised that, we don't have that yet, so what I would ask is the council approve a resolution as stated, but add that regarding the special warranty deed, approval and acceptance is conditioned upon the current tenant of the property. Mills Properties LLC also conveying or transferring to the city its leasehold interest in the parcel being conveyed and fee at no cost to the city. We understand it's going to be wrapped up in the next couple of days, but I didn't want council to accept it without this condition in the resolution.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, is there a motion to amend per Attorney Rogers?
So moved.
Motion seconded for discussion or questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Back to the original resolution as amended. There's been a motion in the second, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item thirty-six reads, "A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a contract with the Cedar Falls Women's Club for use of their facility for a charrette relative to the downtown visioning and zoning code update." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded for the discussion, Mr. Green, I believe you polled.
Mr. Mayor, so this would have a rental space, a private space for about sixteen hundred dollars for June first through sixth, and given the cost, a question why we didn't simply use another city-owned space for the effort, such as the community center or the new co-lab at the library. So if I could hear from staff on that.
You bet. Staff, anything towards?
Sure, I can answer that question. This is a unique process, the charrette process that we're planning for the downtown visioning. The consultants needed a space that they could occupy for all day from early in the morning till late in the evening, that the public could come and go during those hours. They would have some open studio hours, a space where they can set up their computers and leave for the duration of the charrette. It would be a working studio space for them, and also then could easily translate to some public meetings that they're planning during that time. So the consultants, through all their experience, had recommended that we have it either in a downtown storefront that was empty, and somebody was willing to lease that space to us because it was a space that the public was very visible and they could come to. We explored a number of different options, and the women's club was the space that had all the available needs for the consultant group that was coming in. They felt that it was a good space for the public to be able to access at all different times of the day.
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask for future meetings or charrettes, particularly with the College Hill Visioning, when we get to that, if we can use something at her center, I would ask that we try to pursue that.
Yes, I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Been motion seconded for item thirty-six, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item forty-nine is passing ordinance amending the code of ordinance as relative to the reorganization of city operations upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded. I will open this ordinance up to the public if there's a request or a public comment on item forty-nine. Hearing and seeing none, this requires any comments from council. Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item fifty is passing ordinance amending certain sections of the code of ordinance as relative to the remaining of the Department of Municipal Operations and Programs of the Department of Public Works upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item fifty-one is passing ordinance amending the code of ordinance as relative to the renaming of the Public Works and Parks Division Manager to the Operations and Maintenance Division Manager upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Comments from council? Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item fifty-two is passing ordinance amending sections of the code of ordinance as to be in conformance with the code of Iowa and consistent with current city operations upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded. Comments? Roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item fifty-three, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Second.
Motion seconded, requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next item is, "City council have any referrals this evening?" Hearing and seeing none, does city council have any updates this evening? Mr. Blanford?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment. There was an event downtown this evening. It was a cleanup project, a number of volunteers, including Council Green and myself. I just want to thank those volunteers for taking the time. They were going through downtown, cleaning up refuse, cleaning up the brick areas, and I just appreciate that group because it's, I know it's a lot of work, and it keeps our downtown looking good and functioning well, so I appreciate all the work they did.
Good for you, thank you. Anything further from council?
Just as a reminder, I think it's next Tuesday night at the library, the Human Rights Commission is having its annual retreat, and I know council members have been invited to attend, and I'm assuming the public is as well.
Thank you, Frank. Any further updates? I know Stephanie had some updates for some staff, if you will.
I do. Two things that I wanted to note. One, tomorrow evening from five to six-thirty is a public meeting related to the parcade design. We have a consultant coming to present different options that we've looked at and a recommendation that we'll be giving, and then we'll be at the, hopefully the council committee on May twentieth to give a recommendation as well. And then the other thing is that the city will be receiving on behalf of its consultants for two projects, will be receiving awards from the, I believe it's the American Society of Consulting Civil Engineers, or something like that, if I didn't mistake their name, for two projects. University Avenue for a transportation project, as well as for the Dry Run Creek project with the sanitary sewer. So Ron will be accepting those awards on our behalf in another week.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other update, I think we mentioned it earlier this evening, correct?
Yeah, I was just going to mention about the parking study presentation Monday night, but we've already talked about it, but it is six to eight, though, at the C triple E Center there at U and I.
And when is that again, just so we're?
Monday night, six to eight p.m.
Yep, Monday night, thank you. And Director Olson, you told me you had an update as well for public safety.
Yes, I do. I think council has heard me in the past talk a little bit about when we respond to fire scenes, what the public safety officers do. I think they've heard me say that they respond to the scene frequently arriving for the fire truck. They can call in information to the firefighters, location of a hydrant, exact location of the fire, how active the fire is. Has the building been evacuated? There's all sorts of information they can relay to, to the fire trucks on the way to the scene. We had a couple of smaller fires here in the last week that I just wanted to brief you in, and I put a two-minute video together and one from some body cams that I thought kind of demonstrates that. You've heard me say it a lot, but you've never really seen it, so I thought this was an opportunity to do that. One of those small fires was a grill fire that occurred. That was actually a propane tank on the grill fire that sprung a leak, and so you had quite a fire spray from that tank that they were to put out with the, that compressed air foam system that we carry in the back of the squads. And that was a very successful use of that. We also had a second-story balcony fire at Gold Falls, which is a large apartment complex with numerous buildings. The first public safety officer arrived at the scene. What you'll see in the video is a public safety officer arrived at the scene, and I think four more squads pulling in to assist. You'll hear one of them communicate with fire, telling him exactly where the fire is. Second-story balcony, first building on the right, the hydrants in the corner, relay some good information to fire. Then you'll see two public safety officers. You kind of got to look closely, this is around midnight, so it's pretty dark, but you'll see two public safety officers with a CAF system deployed. They put the fire out completely, and then you'll hear at the end, one of them tell the other, hey, you know, you need to get your squad car all the way because the fire trucks are coming, something to that effect, because they're very sensitive about getting out of the way of the trucks, so the fire trucks can be front and center to when there's a fire too. So it's really, it's a great team effort, and I want to emphasize that team effort. You know, it's about public safety, it's about whatever, you know, first arriving, last arriving, it doesn't matter, whatever we need to do to get the job done. So I've got a two-minute clip, I think, that is, somewhat demonstrates that the best you can.
Here's Rob Goldfall, Villa. Reporting party was very unclear what was actually going on. They said there was a small fire outside a balcony in the, I suspect we're at home.
Five, Sam three, I'm ten twenty-three. It is, looks like it's starting to porch on fire.
Over.
Hi, do you? I want him off and round.
Five, Sam three, is that on the first floor or second floor?
Second floor.
Five, Sam three, I'm switching to fire tech.
Crashing off Hudson Road and Gold Falls, Iowa. We've got balcony on fire. Eighteen nineteen, University Drive.
I don't have it yet.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not yet, so yeah.
Five, Carmen to five hundred on fire tech.
Hello, hey, Carmen. Just move this one.
It's a, it's a small fire on the second-story porch. They're applying the CAF system on it now. I do have a hydrant right at the corner of the building. This will be the first building to your right when you enter the complex.
Five hundred, Carmen, thank you.
Man Horn.
So.
You're going to move seventeen when he's out, so we can get him out of the way.
Okay.
If you see a fire truck come around the corner, we got to move.
Okay.
And so the point I want to make is, you know, it's the team effort, you know, it's the whole team working together, you know, to accomplish the goals we can, and some of the changes we've made over the years, you can see has definite effects. You got a second balcony, second-story balcony on fire. Last thing we want to do is start the wall on fire, get into the attic area, into the soffit, and that kind of thing. So, you know, this just demonstrates the good work that they're doing and the early response, you know, to some of these calls, it's just so important.
Thank you, Director Olson. Anything updated twice from council? Moving on to item fifty-four is executive session to discuss legal matters per Iowa Code Section two-one dot five-one C to discuss strategy with council and matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent. In property acquisition per Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five-one J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate following public forum. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion seconded, requires a roll call vote.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next is public forum. Speakers will have up to one opportunity to speak for five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Mr. Skeen.
You're not going to throw me out, are you? We just heard a very abominable analysis of the fire situation last week. A garage burned down. It was covered by the courier, and Mr. Olson didn't even mention it. Instead, if you talk about the time that it took those officers to get up to where they were, I mean, in the old days, the fire engine would be there in about a half a minute because I've seen them be there. Oh, yes, Mr. Blanford, yes, they would be.
Mr. Skeen, refrain from naming names.
Well, he had a, he had a comment. See, I went out, I showed you my old copy. I went out and bought a twenty-five-dollar copy of Robert's Will's Order. I'd be willing to bet, none of you have a copy of Robert's Will's Order. And yet, that is what is adopted so that a council can work through motions and arrive at the best possible solution. In this council and since two thousand and fourteen, there has been very little, if any, discussion, and I'm disappointed in the parliamentarian because the parliamentarian, Mr. Rogers, has given you abominable advice about laying on the table. If you lay something on the table, it kills it because it takes a majority to put it on the table, it takes a majority to take it from the table. It is not amendable. It would either do it. Now, Mr. Cruz was very accurate in asking that that be postponed.
I'm going to have to ask you, don't name names, please, it is one of the rules.
Well, okay, the councilperson from the third ward.
Thank you.
I will use, like, you know, the councilperson from the first ward. He always amazes me. I mean, he votes for these roundabouts, and yet he won't put a fourth-way stop sign out in North Cedar. I don't understand that, Mr. Martin, or councilman from the first ward. But anyway, have you had a session, Mr. Rogers, with the council, giving them, you know, fundamentals? In fact, Roberts has expanded to six hundred and some pages, almost over seven hundred pages, and they've disbanded it so that you can know exactly the language you should use for each thing. And in that particular case, and by the way, the council uses German incorrectly. German does not apply to debate. It may apply to debate when a motion's on the floor, but public forum? You're censoring. If you say that you can all of a sudden determine that something is germane or not germane, you know, frankly, I am tired of five-page agendas, eight-hundred-and-eight-page packets, and you deal with it with some more discussion than usually is in an hour and fifteen minutes. There's no way to run a railroad. There's no way to do the people's business because you don't do the people's business. A seven-zero vote is not doing the people's business. And see, I have one more minute to go. And by the way, the five-minute rule you have made applies to forum speeches. Roberts says it doesn't apply to debate. In fact, Roberts says that if you have spoken once, you can't speak again until everybody who wants to speak, but you can speak again. But the mayor doesn't know that. We know that, the mayor doesn't know that. So I'm going to have the red card come up in a second, but I'm not proud of this city council. I'm not proud of, well, I kind of like Mr. Cruz because he understands parliament procedure. He tries to get things done, but when it's five-two, you don't get much.
Thank you, Mr. Skeen. Attorney Rogers, like, because of the past couple of meetings. Mr. Skeen, please sit down.
I am.
You need to be quiet then, please, we still hear you.
I haven't even had the red card. Have I had the red card?
Yes.
Now I have the red card.
Mr. Rogers, just explain, if you would, please. Hang on, I'll be patient this time. That for this body to attend, it follows what is the top-level state code. State code determines how to do public hearings, when to publish, all those high-level legal things, which we obviously adhere to. They give a lot of leeway to the bodies, and each city council in the state of Iowa, rightly so, were locally affected or were locally elected, and they give a lot of leeway to the body of the council to establish their own rules, if you will, of the comment, how to have a receive and file. And if within our meeting, something doesn't fall under the state or fall under our local rules, and I think it's maybe happened once or twice, Roberts' rules then applies, very bottom rung, where I think sometimes a previous speaker wants to put Roberts' rules on top of everything even ahead of the state. Do I have that accurate? I couldn't have stated it better. I'm not even attorney. Thank you. Anyone further from the public comment portion? Yes, please, just your name and address as well, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about something that is a genuine, serious concern. My name is Jackie Preston, and I live at two-two-two-eight Eric Road. I am on the board of the Meadows Homeowners Association, and I've been the main point person regarding the construction of Aldrich Elementary, including both the school and the city issues. I've spoken with Doug Nefsker and Stephanie Houk Sheets many, many
Just your name and address as well, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about something that is a genuine, serious concern. My name is Jackie Preston and I live at 2228 Eric Road. I am on the board of the Meadows Homeowners Association and I've been the main point person regarding the construction of Aldrich Elementary, including both the school and the city issues. I've spoken with Doug Nefsker and Stephanie Houk Sheets many, many times about concerns that people in the neighborhood have had. I've arranged two neighborhood meetings, one that was early in the process, and then one just after most of the construction was completed. And while the conversations and the discussions have been informative, helpful, cordial, the situation remains unresolved. Traffic on Eric has increased significantly as the second better access connecting Greenhill to the arbors is still not open, and we're being told that that is completely the developer's choice. Earlier, we were told that it would have happened, but with the second one that wasn't the best choice, it hasn't done anything to relieve the traffic on Eric. In addition to the increase in traffic, there are many vehicles that speed as Eric is a little bit wider street. And it's also a straight shot for most of the distance from Hudson up to the school, which creates a big problem. For the second time now, the speed trailer is out. However, it was placed only a few houses from where the curve starts as you come up to Hudson Road, and it's in clear view of anybody coming from the direction of the school. And at that point, they're already slowing down because of the curve and because of approaching the stoplight. So, we don't really believe that it's effective in letting people know that they are speeding in that area. In my discussion, is it okay to say a name here?
I'd really prefer you not, but if.
Okay. In my discussion with the community development specialist.
Stephanie's, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, I appreciate you asking.
I'm trying to be careful. She stated that they have really learned that straight shot roads are not the safest in the school areas. And while that is great learning for future development that happens, it really doesn't do anything for the children that live in the meadows. The situation is made dramatically worse by the fact that there is literally no safe crossing point on Eric for people to get from the south side to the north side, which they have to do to get to the school. The sidewalks do not go all the way to the arbors, and even where that crosswalk should be, and there was originally painted line, they are terribly, terribly faded, so you can barely see it. There's no hatching, there's no pedestrian sign, there's nothing, and that still doesn't account for the problem for people getting from the south side over to the north side. Families living within a mile are required to get their children to school with no bus options, but having their children walk literally puts their lives at risk. With summer quickly approaching, we would expect to see children walking, biking, skateboarding up to the school for the fabulous playground, but there's just no way for them to safely do that from the south side of Eric. And that includes a lot of other streets besides just Eric. It's, it's Applewood, it's Ironwood, um, there's a lot of streets there that represents a lot of families. And many of those parents are actually, um, going back to things that I used to talk to you about, which was blue zones, getting kids out and having them be healthy and active. And right now, it's very, very hard to do that. Just the other day, there was an ambulance down the street for me, and I will tell you that I had an immense feeling of dread, and I thought, oh no, it's, it's really happened this time. Sorry. I personally have seen several near misses, and while one of the suggestions to reduce speeding is to have people park their cars on the street, that creates an obstructed view, and since there's no safe for kids to cross, the concern is they will come out between cars and we will have a child be hit. I have pictures. I took a bunch of pictures and printed them out so that you could see exactly the problem. I would encourage you to go and look for yourself. I would gladly answer any questions that you might have. I'm really concerned not only for the safety of children in that neighborhood, but also for the liability of the city and of the schools. And the discussion has gone on repeatedly, doing another study in the summer where there's not all the traffic to the schools isn't gonna be helpful. So, my request to all of you is just, would you please try to help us find a way to keep kids safe?
Thank you, Ms. Preston.
Thank you.
If you have, do you have copies of that? I can have staff grab later for, or, or maybe email them, just, yes, hand them to staff if you would, then we'll make copies and circulate them. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, previous speaker from council?
Mr. Mayor, could we have, uh, comments from staff on that, from the discussions?
Well, we can certainly have to lead those. And I'll, I'll lead him, I'm sorry, but I know that with Ms. DeBoer reaching out to myself and then the staff, and we've reached out to Dr. Pattee on delivery vehicles, cause they are going down Eric Road as opposed to coming from the south, uh, that road. And in essence, they're very attuned to what's going on, they're trying to have conversations with those delivery folks. It may need to wait officially until that next contract is up, as far as the routes and cost. City Administrator Gaines, I know we've discussed a little bit as far as that, that final or eventual, um, access moving north onto the Greenhill extension. Is that anywhere? Is that something council can move on, aside from other particulars for that road?
Well, there's actually a couple of access points here. There's another one that will be, um, uh, it's, both of them are developer-driven, but one would, would be out onto Hudson Road, and then the other would go up to Greenhill Road. And so, like I said, both of them at this time are developer-driven, and depending on the timing and some of that, maybe the city will have to get involved and move those forward.
Mr. Blanford?
Minister Gaines, in the, in the interim, is there anything that we can do? I know Director Sheets and I discussed it briefly after Councilman Duvert brought it to our attention, as far as additional sidewalks or temporary signage or anything of that nature? Are there some temporary measures we could take?
We can definitely look at, um, anything that would, would, uh, help, whether it's sidewalks or trails or those type of things, crosswalks. I know that we have our, our painting contractor will be coming along, they could refreshen a lot of those things, try to come up with some other traffic calming devices for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Frank?
And signage, is there, are there children that play signs, or some sort of, uh, more to do visually to alert drivers?
I think there's a couple things. One would be enforcement, uh, having police do some enforcement. The speed trailer is, is a really good, um, you know, unfortunately, in some of those cases, the, uh, if the drivers are speeding, they're probably already not really paying attention to the signs.
I hate to mention this, but I remember many years ago, um, we had a neighborhood that was concerned about the same thing, and we ended up putting speed bumps in. How would the neighbors feel about speed bumps? I don't know, it's just, uh, it, it does seem to me to be an issue that none of us want to have happen, you know? So, uh, if we can do some interim things on the cheap to make it safer with a longer-range plan, um, I think we ought to think about that for that school in any future. Hopefully, we'll have new elementaries coming up, so.
This isn't new enough, it's been one year now for Aldrich. It could be incumbent upon council to bring it up for referral next time and have all the discussions that are possible, cause we've had them before with city engineering, with traffic, speed bumps, signage, access, developmental agreements, so, um, that would be my take as well. Anyone further? Yes, Mr. Gaines?
Eric Road has been a perennial problem for the past 12 or 14 years. The problem is the developers are responsible for putting in the road system when they develop it. The problem with Eric Road is one developer develops his section and doesn't have to do anything about the rest of it, or putting in other access roads. Some other developer's responsible for that. And so, we take a long period of time before we get the road system the way it should be to support the neighborhood once it's done. And the city says it's the developers, which it is. But maybe we need to look at that and take action when it involves kids that pre-loans money to them or something, because it's not getting solved. It's wonderful having the problem of having a, a large area that needs to be developed, but the adverse consequences of that is typically at Eric Road that's a mile and a half long that curves to the right to a new school, and all of a sudden, a new set of problems come up. Uh, I'd like to sit down and just go over that with some people and see, what can we do differently we're doing now? Do we need to change ordinances when this type of case arises? Cause this is not a new issue. And we'll put in speed bumps, or we'll put in signs, or we'll put in, uh, markers so we know if people are speeding. But really, the basic problem's still there. Developers are responsible for finishing the project, and that doesn't take into account the needs of our children. So, I'll look into it a little bit further, along with the rest of council, I'm sure.
There hasn't been any questioning. We, we will definitely bring this forward as, as a parent here with council. Please do reach out to the council, have the referral, and we can, you go there. We can't take any action now, cause it's not a part of the agenda in terms of the referral itself, or in terms of public, public comment. Thank you. Anyone further? Anyone further to public comment this evening? Yes, sir, go ahead. Just your name and address, please.
Ryan Pence, 5420 Ironwood Drive. So, I do live in that, that south side of that subdivision, so there's 125 houses where there's, there is no signage today, um, there's no, you know, crosswalk, you know, in that area. So, it seems like if you're developing a new school, that there should be some collaboration between the city, the school district. So, I went and I looked at Des Moines School District, and they have a map of every single school that shows where the crosswalks are, where, you know, the buttons are to push that you can, you know, get across for every single school. And so, when we went and talked to the principal, they said, you know, it's off the ground, we can't handle it. We talked to PTA, off the school, we can't handle it. We talked to the city, it's, we need to do pedestrian studies. I mean, we have 125 houses, and there's no way to cross a road, the main road, that almost all the parents are using to, to take their kids to the school. So, it, if we're gonna ask for money for more schools, it seems like we need to be able to bring, you know, everyone together, um, to be able to, to solve this, instead of just pointing fingers, you know, at everyone else, so.
Agreed.
There, there at least needs to be some temporary measures of some, some, you know, signs and, uh, you know, looking in the future where to put in a crosswalk, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pence.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just a question. With the Cedar Falls Farmers Market, the downtown one, uh, we set out a, uh, a yield sign that's been really helpful on Franklin and, I think, Third Street, yeah, Third Street. Is, is that something that could be looked at? Do we have to have a large rule or some, some change just to be able to put something like that out in the middle of the street so cars go around that? Cause that has really positive slowdown impact to traffic. And it's very inexpensive to buy.
No, I, I understand. I'm, I'm trying to uphold to the, to our, to our rules of, of engagement that I just described. If, if there is, uh, discussions with staff in terms of, uh, what's possible, short-term, long-term, or that referral, I don't want to lay it any further, but I'm trying to withhold to those, so that could be a very viable option for that road. It, it's just different ideas to throw out, and obviously, safety's number one, so. Anyone further? There was someone? Yes, please, your name and address.
My name's Whitney Smith, I live on Niola Street. Actually, I wasn't planning on talking about that at all, but, uh, my son actually was hit by a car on his way to school, the very first time we told him he could ride his bike to school, the day after his birthday, the day he got his bike. And luckily, he walked away with a scratch, and even the bike wasn't hurt. But there, there are significant speeding issues in a lot of residential neighborhoods. And I myself, I mean, we went out and bought a little sign to put in front of our house, you know, slow down, there's kids playing. It doesn't, it doesn't faze them. This guy that hit my kid, he actually took off after he hit him. It's okay, we got him. But, um, there wasn't anything blocking his view of my son. No, it was my son's fault for going out into the street without looking, but if you're going 25 miles per hour down my street, like you should be, you could've swerved, you could've stopped. But I would like to see maybe some speed bumps. Another thing that I was talking to my neighbors about is apparently my street used to be a one-way. And maybe that would be something that would be helpful for Eric Road, if you could have an exit street, um, but have a one-way going in and another way going out, um, that will leave room for more kids on the road that's already there to travel, um, and make it safer. But the other thing I want to talk about, obviously, is the fire department, um, and the budget. So, Mr. Olson, I'm sorry, uh, Director of Public Safety brought up that a large chunk of the necessary increase in, in funds was due to overtime for the firemen. And in a letter that you had previously written to another person in the community, you talked about the excessive payout in that too. So, my question is, why do they need this much overtime? Why aren't there enough people to cover these shifts? As a fire family, not, my husband doesn't work for Cedar Falls, but I trust when he goes to work that he's gonna come back, because the people he's working with are competent to save him. They have, they have their own, own problems in Waterloo, but I know that there's, there's two in, there's two out, there's people on command, and I don't see that here, and it scares me to death. I don't think it's fair to blame the firemen. I think that we are lucky to have the experience that we still do in the firehouse. We've lost a lot of experience, and that's irreplaceable. It's gonna take decades to replace that. Overall, I'm just disappointed. I'd like to hear the public safety director speak more highly of the firemen and the people who are there. I'd like morale increased for them. They're there to serve us, to save us. They would run into any of your houses and save any of you, and I think that they deserve that respect back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Before the next speaker, anyone from council questions or comments?
Can we get some background on the overtime question?
You may.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, I'd like to, just a couple of things if I could. Yeah, the overtime scenario, uh, we've had an enormous amount, as I stated earlier, of, of sick leave calls, which has generated an enormous amount of overtime. When we schedule, we schedule to a certain minimum, and, um, if, if you have a shift of X number of people, and then you have people that take time off, um, we have some language in our contact, contract where we have to allow a certain number of people off. And so, then you also have to allow your supervisors off, and then if you end up with a sick leave call, you're, you're gonna be short, but we had, uh, over 4,700 hours in sick leave hours used, uh, in the last nine months, which has created an enormous amount of overtime. So, so that's been part of that reason for, for that overtime. You know, as far as the comment on, on, you know, command officers at the scene, uh, we currently have, um, I think we have seven fire supervisors, and I think each one of them, and the fire chief loves to give me a nod, but has at least 10 years of experience in that supervisory position. So, we got some significant, uh, some supervisors with some significant experience that do an exceptional job, uh, on the fire scene. So, you know, my, um, uh, we have some great firefighters that do a great job, and, and so, when we have all this controversy going on, it may sound at times like I'm not appreciative of that, but I am, but I just have to add, address those concerns that, that people have, and, and some of it, uh, you know, it doesn't always come out the way people would like it to. And, and if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make one more comment about that garage fire that was mentioned. So, we did have a couple of PSOs arrive at that garage fire scene first, uh, they relayed information to the fire shifts, like we showed on the video. That structure was fully involved upon arrival. You, you could've dumped 10,000 gallons on the water the second the first guy arrived, it wouldn't have mattered. That, that was, uh, uh, fully involved. In fact, uh, when I left to go to that fire call, uh, which was right after the call came out, I could look and from a mile away, see the smoke, so it was a significant fire. The fire trucks are not delayed. The fire, there's firefighters every day that work at the firehouse, and they jump on the fire trucks and they go immediately to scene, so there's absolutely no, no delay in their response, um, at, at all. So, we had a good showing for this, um, they did a terrific job protecting two houses that were, well, I think one was about 12 feet away and the other one maybe 20, 25 feet away from the enormous amount of heat that melted siding and did, did some damage to the house, but prevented them from catching fire. And, and that, the first truck arriving, uh, you know, put water on the adjacent houses at first, uh, to, to minimize the damage to those houses. You know, and, and then, you know, um, at some point, and this was another scenario where we had to haul water too, by the way, cause there's no hydrants in that area, uh, then we were able to put fire on the structure, but the, uh, what happened is you had a, a vehicle inside that started on fire, the homeowner was home, tried to put it out, couldn't get it out, and then ended up catching the rest of the garage on fire. It was a two-stall unattached garage.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. In regards to that overtime question, I've heard it several times, that, at least some people out in the public think that that is because we're understaffed at the fire station and we're asking them to work overtime. Can you comment on that, or is that labor union stuff that you don't go into? or is that labor union stuff that you don't go into?
So, we maintain, so we maintain a minimum staffing level. And so, whether, so if we have a scenario and, you know, as I mentioned, the contract allows for a couple of people off. We have to allow supervisors off as well. And if we have that sick call, we're not, nobody, nobody's required to work overtime. We have had, they volunteer. All the overtime is, is on a volunteer basis. I would say 99.9% of it is all volunteer, people volunteering to work that overtime, if that was the basis of the question. So, it's, the majority is because of the sick time and then people volunteer to work it.
Thank you.
Anything further from council, previous speaker? Anyone else, public comment? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name's Eric Fusel. I live at 2425 Eric Road. It is the very last home in the Meadows. So, I got to see all the construction, the school, everything. And now, kind of get to see, if I'm not already at work or if I happen to get off early, the joy of all the little kids from kindergarten through sixth grade. And they all filter literally at my driveway as I am the last house. And I'd only utilize that sidewalk because I know I would as a kid. There's this awesome huge retention pond and they're walking through that. I've got the mud prints in my driveway to prove it. With that, just kind of to, to reiterate what's already been said, not only the speeding, you know, I've heard signs. I've put a sign in my yard. I know it's probably pointless. The, right now, there's that 25 mile an hour stop. I see the thing flashing red. People are ignoring it. But in addition to that, all the children that are on that south side all have to cross over Eric. There is no sidewalk to kind of help buffer or defer. It's all that one collection point. So, I know sidewalks normally aren't built until a home is built. There's numerous lots still on that south side of Eric in the Arbers that further need development. I don't know what encouragement from the city can have on the movement of that, but if that sidewalk could be placed, then there's an, an additional spot for children to cross further up at the Arbers connection where, that's where I see all the parents slow down. They fly down Eric and they wait till they hit that Arbers area and go, "Oh, yeah, that's right. There's kids walking here." Well, duh, because that's where they're all collecting. So, and there were some striping put there, weather, snow, everything. That removed it quite quickly, but that really only is, and thankfully so, but that's really good for the Arbers kids, but not really for the, for the kids that live in the Eric neighborhood. So, just wanted to throw that in there as an additional, not only the, the studies for the speeds, but just the additional assistance of the sidewalk on the south side as well, if that could be looked at and if there's some encouragement for the developers to build that ahead of time versus waiting for homes to go in. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Just a comment from back there?
Darren Yoder, Beaver Ridge Trail. My primary question is about the cost of the PSO model. Just some stats from 2017, the police and fire budget was 7.6 million and the proposed 2020 budget is the police and fire to be 9.5 million. So, it's going up almost $2 million from 2017 to the 2020 budget. The police budget by itself is going up 41% and that's without the proposed budget that was voted on today. I'm not sure how much of that affects police versus fire, but the police is up 41%. It's by far the biggest budget increase for 2020. So, so my question is, is on a social media page, there was a post from Cedar Falls that said, "Under the traditional staffing," which is what we, we had more traditional staffing in 2017 than what we will have in 2020, "but under the traditional staffing model, it will cost $9 million." But in 2017, it was clear that it only costs 7.6. So, that's my first question is why, why does the city say the traditional staffing is going to cost nine when it really has only been costing 7.6? That's the first. And then the other is on that same post, it says, "The PSO model is going to save us $2 million and reduce the cost down to 7 million." So, it's supposed to reduce our cost, but in 2020, when we're more fully involved with this PSO model, the 2020 budget is obviously $2 million higher than what it was. So, I'd like to know why this post came about and the PSO model, for example, has it down to the penny, down to eight cents. So, somebody somewhere did some math and calculated that it's going to cost $7 million under this PSO model. I'd like to see that. I think that should be public knowledge. The city should release that information to say, "If we're going to save money, here's the traditional staffing model and it's going to cost 9 million. And here's the PSO model and here's how it can be different. It's going to cost seven" because the evidence is clear that it's costing more, $2 million more from 2017 to 2020. And that does not include an $11 million public safety building that doesn't factor into this budget. So, it sounds like a very expensive model and you guys have compared it to Kalamazoo and Kalamazoo pays their PSOs 45,000. We're paying our PSOs 58,500. So, the math just doesn't work for me, being a finance guy and I, losing our house, I feel like I'm a fire guy now, too. But, but what really drives me crazy is, is this post. There's a councilman put in the, it was in the paper today, that, that there's misinformation on social media and my opinion is exactly, it's on the Cedar Falls page. It's, it's totally misinforming the public and there's no evidence and there's no asterisk. There's no, "See the data here on how it's going to save $2 million." So, I agree, there's a lot of misinformation on social media. It just happens to be on the Cedar Falls page and I'd like to see some clarification on that somehow, somewhere, please. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, anything from council, previous speaker, Mr. Plankton?
Ambassador Gaines, your director, Ron Beck, do you want to discuss the budgetary question that was posed?
You want to start?
I can start. Just one of the things I just wanted to clarify is sometimes when people are taking numbers out of the budget, I want to make sure they're using the numbers that encompass it all. And what I mean by that is, you know, we did some calculations on comparing the models that looked at salaries and benefits. When you take numbers from the budget, it includes everything in those budgets, consolidated dispatch, animal control, capital, office supplies, postage. So, I just want to make sure that, again, when people are looking at some of those numbers, comparison, it is truly the apples to apples that we're looking at. Also have to keep in mind, when you pull those numbers out of the budget, that you have to go and look in the trust and agency fund, too, that has all the retirement costs in them. So, I just wanted to make a couple of those clarifications that sometimes it's difficult to pick the numbers out of the budget and then compare it to a worksheet when we're talking about just salaries and not total costs.
Yeah, and I, I would just add that when you also look at that, the numbers, the 7 million and the 9 million, I don't have those exactly in front of me right now, but those were actually done as a cost comparison, apples to apples. So, really what that, there's, there's a lot of asterisks maybe that, that I should say, is you had to actually look at, if you're looking at the model to compare them apples to apples, you actually have to take the, compare people in their same, firefighters, police officers, PSOs, all in their, in their job classifications at the same place in their pay band. That's the first thing that you have to do. So, you can, because obviously, if you have a career-heavy folks that have been in their job 25 years and then you have other folks that have been in their job three, four years, you're not getting the same cost comparison. So, that's A. B, the other thing you have to do is make sure that you're comparing the same response. So, just because, you know, under the traditional model, you may have had a minimum of six, but if you're, under the PSO model, if you're saying that we can get to a minimum of 10, you have to make sure that you can compare fire and police staffing and PSO staffing so it's all an equal comparison.
Can I add one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
You know, the, the comment about the PD being up, I think he said 41%. You know, part of what's, what's occurring here is you have a firefighter retire, we replace him with a public safety officer. So, that payroll comes out of the fire budget and goes into the police budget. And the reason it does that is because the public safety officer is in the job classification or pay grade, is in the police Teamster Union contract. So, that money comes out of the police budget. So, you, you, the, the police budget has gone up, the fire budget has gone down. And then, of course, annually, you know, you have your, your negotiated wages with, with the unions, too. So, you're going to see some increases annually there. But, you know, as you can see, that the whole budgeting scenario is not always as simple as it sounds because there's a lot of factors involved to it.
And how many of the last year of the public safety officers under the umbrella of the Teamster Unions have we hired, roughly?
Well, we had nine, this is very rough. We had nine firefighters either retire or resign and they all went into the police union and then we were hired ahead some, so they went in as well. So, we've added quite a few to the Teamsters Union.
Okay, thank you. Anyone further from council? Any further public comment this evening?
Sharon Reginald, 108 Lily Put Lane. I absolutely love that we are comparing apples to apples, especially when it comes to talking about overtime and the firefighters overtime. The sick leave use, you guys have claimed, has increased firefighters overtime. Apples to apples? One day of sick leave use to a firefighter is 24 hours. One day of sick leave to a police officer is eight hours. You people love to tell the public that the firefighters are using an astronomical amount of hours of sick leave. If you want to compare it apples to apples, why don't you start using days? How many days have the firefighters taken? How many days have everybody else taken? You offset this thing and you make it look horrible. Another thing with the overtime issues with firefighters is we've had three major, major, long-term issues, sick leave issues with the firefighters. Three firefighters have been out on long-term sick leave, one with a back injury that required surgery, one with a total knee replacement, and one with a shoulder surgery. All those injuries are huge. Any other area, and those are things that are unusual, unusual. They don't, they do not happen in the same year. I would also like to address some of the things that the director, Public Safety Director, talked about earlier in the video he showed. First of all, he was saying what great teamwork we have since this PSO experiment has been put into place. I'm a retired firefighter. I've been with fire service for 20-plus years, retiring about almost two years ago. And I can tell you that that teamwork has been there the entire time I have been a firefighter, the entire time before this PSO experiment has ever been put into place. Police officers, if they arrive on scene first, have always given us the location of hydrants, has given us an idea what the fire is like, has given us an idea of where we can go. They have always done that and the citizens have not had to pay extra for it. That teamwork has always been there. That teamwork is also there with Sartor paramedics. If they arrive on scene first, they give us that same information. The taxpayers aren't asked to pay them extra for it. Another thing he started talking about is how the firefighting gear has cost such a large amount of money and it is. It's crazy expensive, no doubt, because there's a lot of liability in using that stuff and how that has increased the budget. Yet, what did we see on the video? You saw a police officer at the end of a hand line fighting a fire without any gear on, in his police uniform. What are we paying for? Any firefighter caught doing that would be written up, would be under investigation. It wouldn't be allowed. And yet, we extend all this cost to our taxpayers and we're not even doing what we tell them we're going to do. Anyway, that's just some things that I have some concerns with and some things that I think are being misled to the taxpayers and just wanted to share my feelings on that. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, anything further from council, questions? Director Olson?
Yeah, I'd like to address some of those. So, you know, the sick leave use, we, we were asked where the expenditure was the biggest one for the budget amendments does. We have actually made comparisons of sick leave use to other city departments. And, you know, you're asking, so I'm going to tell you. There was a significant larger use, no matter how you compare it by hours or by days, on the fire side. And I'm not trying to bash them. I'm just, you asked, so I'm, I just can't leave that lie. You're absolutely true. We've always had good teamwork. We've always had good teamwork between all, all of the police officers and the firefighters and such. But what you saw in the video was they do not have to suit up to use the CAF system. Okay, we have reviewed that with OSHA. We have reviewed that as much as we can with the manufacturer to make sure we're using it appropriately. Had that been a big fire, what you would have seen is you would have seen those individuals put on their fire gear to assist the fire trucks when they arrived. And we would not write up a firefighter for not using it because I've seen it many, many times where they've used it without SCBA or without a helmet and that type of thing, putting out car fires, grass fires, you know, small fires similar to this. So, you know, I wish we could just sit down together and communicate and talk about these differences and, and work them out because it is a model that's working. The city manager commented that we made a comparison of 10 on the scene. I've heard today, the minimum of six on the fire shifts that we had in the past. We, we averaged up all the hours that the PSOs and the firefighter used minus vacation time, sick time, all of, all of that. Total them up for the year, divided by the number of hours in the year, we averaged 15 firefighters working around the clock, 24/7, 365. Now, I'm going to tell you, that's average. So, sometimes it's 25, sometimes it's 10, whatever the number might be. But we've seen significant improvements in the numbers of people available to fight those fires. But it also adds people to the police side because we've got more people on the police shifts, two to three more people per shift, a lot of them in training at this point. But you'll see more in the police shift. That's the big advantage for very, very similar, similar costs. So, you know, when we get in these discussions, there's just an enormous amount of detail that, that you need to go through to understand completely how it works. But if it wasn't working, we'd back up the bus and do something different, so.
Thank you, Director. Anything further from council, the director, other staff? Anyone further for public comment?
Simon Harding, 2238 Sunny Side Circle. I don't have the data in front of me. I don't have the numbers. He says one thing, she says another. He says another thing, someone else says another. It's pretty obvious. City is kind of, you know, going up and down. Everybody's unhappy. Some people are happy. Some people don't know anything. Some people are super happy. But obviously, it seems like something's going on. So, isn't it in everybody's best interest for transparency to be there? The goal of everyone up here is to represent the city, correct? And to do what's best for the city and to represent the citizens of your ward. So, wouldn't it be in the best interest to have complete transparency? And in order to do that, maybe instead of him saying data and her saying data, we spend our money to bring in a third party that's not biased and do a survey of the citizens. What do they think of it? Do a consultation with someone who really crunches the numbers, gives apples-to-apples numbers and then puts it out there and says, "Here's the apples-to-apples." So, we can really see. Are there these comparisons that you say, you know, "I don't know who to believe. Where can I find them? Where can I find the apples-to-apples things? Why are his budget numbers different than yours? Why is it so hard to figure out? Seems to me like it should be pretty easy. Let's all get together. Let's talk. Let's be completely transparent. Let's show the true numbers. Let's show the true data. And then, there's no more he said, she said. And let's talk to the citizens of our wards. Let's meet..." And let's talk to the citizens of our wards, let's meet with them once every quarter. Who has a ward meeting? Who spends time with their citizens? Who even knows the percentage of people that are for the PSO? Who knows who's against it? Seems to me like we should up our communication skills and our transparency and work harder to represent the real citizens.
Thank you. Anything further from council, previous speaker? Anyone speaking this evening at public forum? Hearing seen none, we will now adjourn to the executive session. Oh, sorry, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Rachel Wallace, I live at 5205 Ironwood Drive, and I'm here to support possible further traffic control also in the Meadows area. I live on a busy corner, so I live on Ironwood and Eric, so I see every day the cars get faster as they approach a school, either to pick up kids or to drop their kids off. I have three of those small kids at my home, so even just leaving the driveway or watching my two-year-old walk out our garage, I fear sometimes for her, you know, that she's going to approach the street. I don't know if it's possible or what you guys can do to help in this situation, but we do have a stop sign, a two-way stop on that corner, and I don't, I can't speak for my whole neighborhood, but I don't know if it would help to turn the stop signs so that the traffic on Eric actually has to stop, because Eric is kind of a continuation of Hudson Road. The speed seems to almost be similar to Hudson Road. People, I think, tend to forget that they're not on it anymore. In Ironwood, there's a dead end on one end, so you have a stop on that corner, but you have the people on Ironwood stopping, not the people on Eric. So I feel like Eric is the more busy road. I don't know if that could possibly help the situation with not having to put a lot of cost on the city. We've already got two stop signs right there, if they could possibly face the other direction. It's just a suggestion, again, I can't speak for the whole neighborhood, but I'd like to see something possibly to help resolve the traffic and the speeds, whether it be a crosswalk or flashing yellow sign. I don't know if that would help. I do feel like the police is helping slow people down right now with that sign flashing, but I also feel like once it's gone, it's going to be forgotten that the speed does reside at 25. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone further for public comment? Wait. Thank you very much, we'll now adjourn to executive session.